Everyone, we'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge. Brad, would you lead us?
I'll have to do it today.
Let's allegiance to the flag, I think, to the state America, into the republic where we stand. One nation, on the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you, everybody. Welcome to the planning board meeting, August 28th. I'd like to first talk about exits, the front and backside of the building. If there's an issue here, we'd like you to go outside either of the two doors, or the opposite, or wherever the event may be, and meet across the parking lot in the, on the sidewalk next to the Methodist Church. I also would like to ask if your phones are on, please reduce the volume so I don't have to hear that. That'll be really kind of interesting to keep hearing bling bling and ring ring. Also, I think that's about it, housekeeping. I have the meeting minutes from July 17th and July 24th. I would like someone to make a resolution with the changes made.
With, I want to confirm that all the changes that I gave you were made? Okay. I'll make the motion then.
There you go. Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. So is there the public hearing for... Oh, we have the public hearing open, or public hearing for the Buddhist Cultural Center, Site Plan 86 New Paltz Road. The review status was, public hearing was set for August 28th. And if we can have someone from the applicant speak to the project? Just state who you are and how you represent the applicant when you come up and have a seat.
John, turn the mic on and then speaking in the mic, because the meeting's being put on. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Jonathan Millen.
And you can pull it closer to you too. You don't have to reach all the way over. There you go. Make yourself comfortable.
Feel like I'm on TV now.
You are.
You are.
You are.
They're proposing to essentially change what was a duplex apartment into a cultural center and a teacher's residence. There are a number of issues with the parcel. Where do we start? The one thing I would mention is that requirements for ADA, as I understand it, are not required when you have a church. So I have some documentation here that says religious entities under the Americans with Disabilities Acts are exempt. I don't know if that's the opinion here or not.
That's news to me. I don't have any opinion on that.
Yeah, we'd still be concerned for any of those people with disabilities to be able to get in and out of the building properly without having to maybe take a wheelchair down the flight stairs.
I'm just saying that there is, if you look at the national information, there is an exemption for that, but so...
But does that only cover the portion of the premises that's going to be the church? Is only half of it is going to be the church?
Well, that's true. Only half of it is going to be the church.
And then you got the school and the offices. Daycare center or whatever.
Right.
Summer school.
No, well, in the public hearing, you have people speak to it, but you can tell us any of the changes from what we were already speaking to for the last couple of meetings that we were here. My concern on that issue, which we're not going to make a decision on it, but obviously we want to keep in mind the safety and the benefit of a handicapped person being able to in and out of that property.
Right.
Church or not, we would still consider their safety amongst, above everything else.
Okay, I'm not lobbying for it to be exempt. I'm just, we just researched it.
Okay, well, we made mention of the ADA the last time, so now it sounds like you are lobbying for that, if you don't mind me saying.
Okay, no.
Okay.
We're perfectly content to put a ramp in.
So it's a non-issue right now, just so we're clear. Thank you.
All right. There is some concern about the water service. Apparently at the street, there's one valve. And apparently one line is running up to two separate residences. There's a valve for the residence that is to the north. As you go up the driveway, there is no valve for the residents on top, or our residents. So in order to shut off the water to the one on top, you'd have to shut the valve off at the street, which would also shut the valve off for the parcel to the north. I understand they have separate water meters. But something would, I would assume, have to be worked out as far as separating that service somehow.
Okay.
So it's actually not as much about the water valves. That's one issue. But technically, water lines cannot be shared between separate parcels. So they actually have to be physically separated, or you have to have a transportation corporation formed.
Okay. All right, so that'll have to be dealt with somehow. The only way I can see it being dealt with would be digging it up at the first.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's your option. You'd have to, you'd have to run.
I'm curious why they didn't run a separate line when they ran the trench up. I understand they ran into some rock that...
And the lines could be run in the same trench. That's...
Yeah, I don't understand why they didn't, but that's an issue. There is a small issue with the septic in that we're probably going to have the tank replaced. Right now, we have been unable to determine if it's a 1,000 gallon tank or a 2,000 gallon tank. Our position is we would like to have a 2,000 gallon tank installed fresh, which should... Yes, sir.
The duplex.
Yes.
Each, each side has its own septic, correct?
This is, we're not exactly sure of that, because if they did, then there would be a separate tank. We haven't been able as yet to find a separate tank. There's two cleanouts, but we haven't been able to determine definitively that there is a second tank.
But that, I was going to say, you should have that in file, because that is a newer one.
I wouldn't have done it before, because they weren't changing bedrooms. In fact, they were probably going to reduce bedrooms. We asked about septic, because, you know, we weren't sure how many people would ever show up to an event. All right, and then they mentioned porta potties the last time we were here. So, but I will pull the plans and find out, because you would think there'd be two, but...
Yes, so could you just get ahold, Dave, who you could file upstairs?
I'm fairly certain we looked through the files and we didn't find anything for the evidence of plans that indicated how it was constructed, or that there was a second tank there.
So your proposal is to what?
My proposal is to replace the tank that's there now with a 2,000 gallon tank, which we feel, we're going to have to determine if there are two leach fields or not. Right now, we can't...
How many bedrooms do you have on each side?
I believe there's three bedrooms on each side, six altogether.
So, yeah, are we, are we looking into doing like a commercial, or commercial design on this? Is that what we're talking about, a commercial design for the septic?
No. No.
I mean, with a change of use like this, it really needs to go to the health department. I mean, we, we don't really have any jurisdiction over septic system design or, or use. I mean, we, it's our water, so we can, we have that jurisdiction, but the health department really ultimately has the final say on, on the use of the septic.
Wasn't part of the, one of the last conversations that we had is that the health department had to look into this also?
It had been.
I thought it was.
Yeah.
I believe we contacted the health department and we weren't, we weren't, we're not able to determine if there were two lease fields or not servicing either side of the building. So that's something that still has to be worked out. We've been trying to work with the owner, and they've had two different septic contractors out there, but we still don't know if there's a second lease field.
There needs to be an application to the health department to, for, for what you're proposing to do, and they'll, they'll tell you what they need to see in terms of
Okay.
capacity of the existing, existing septic system.
All right. The other concern is the driveway, having a turnout on the driveway. The last plan we submitted showed a turnout going up on the southerly side, which is really the only place where one could be put if you stay within the 100-foot buffer from the wetlands. That would be that beige section there on the left. As you're going up on the driveway, it's on the right side, but it's left of the wetlands there. And that's what we're proposing for now.
Dave?
Yeah, since, since you mentioned wetlands, has a jurisdictional determination been made by the DEC yet?
No.
That was also requested at one of the meetings, right, early. Start that.
Yeah, I guess one other, to, to, just to add to that, it looks like one of the, the pull-offs is actually within the 100-foot buffer, which would require a...
Up, up, up at the top. But the question is, how many pull-offs are required? Because the one up at the top is so near the, the actual proposed parking lot.
Looking at, is the first one appears to be well within the buffer.
The first one?
The dimension.
No, the first one isn't in the buffer at all. You can see the 100-foot buffer is the, the red line.
Right there. That, that looks like it's within the buffer.
See that red line there? That's the buffer right there. So it's outside of the buffer. Yes.
Well, I would say, the only thing, you can say that's the buffer, but without a JD, there is no wetland buffer. So we need a JD and their mapping.
Agreed. It's a new survey?
The maps online don't count anymore.
Yeah, because everything was updated this year.
That's right.
They're, they're just for reference. That's, they have to come out and physically.
Okay. And it's all under new rules. And again, that was asked the last time. The applicant came before us.
So you would like us to have the wetlands delineated?
No, what we need is we need a jurisdictional determination under the new wetlands law as of January 1 this year. Yep, the DEC is, you're going to apply to the DEC at the state level. The state will determine whether they think that there are wetlands on the property, and then they'll send someone from Region 3 out to the property to inspect it, and they will do, they will do, they will determine where the wetlands are and where the buffers will be applied.
Okay. I don't think other than the, the septic, the pull-off, the water situation, I don't think there are any other issues associated with it. The tent is going to be temporary, one day only. Expect it to be once a year, maybe twice a year. It's an open-air tent with open sides. And it's basically just a party entertainment kind of thing for their Buddhist cultural center.
It's like, Ken, wasn't there an issue with the electric too?
Maybe the lighting.
Wasn't it on the property line or something?
It appears to be shared as well. I don't, there's not, that, that may not be as big of an issue as water and sewer. Well, I don't, there's not, that, that may not be as big of an issue as water and sewer.
Water, I mean, there's some.
Yeah.
I want to say there are two meters in the building, so whoever gets to the building, it's all.
Okay. I thought it crossed over a property line, that's what I was thinking. Okay.
Also, that has reasons. And I, I'm confirmed, because I see Patty.
Thank you, Patty. So, what else you got, anything else?
No.
Okay.
I have one question.
I was getting that, getting to there, I was gonna ask staff if they had any other questions that they would like to speak about, anything?
Yeah, I have a couple things.
You're up, Captain.
Okay. Maybe I missed it, is there gonna be any kind of cooking taking place within the, the church side of the park?
I, I don't believe they'll be serving meals.
No meals?
I don't believe so.
All right, because that's something else the health department would be looking for, is if there's any kind of a kitchen, they'd likely require grease trap. So that's something that.
I'll confirm that with the owner.
And all the fire stuff.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's true too, right, you know, you'd need the fire suppression for any kind of kicking.
We'll get to board member questions and suggestions in a minute, let's, they need to do first. I know, I see how you know.
Dumpster, there's an existing dumpster enclosure that's being relocated. You're gonna want to make sure that, that your garbage hauler can get to that. Because that, there, there's some turns there that may be challenging for them. Especially if it's, you know, front load, if you're wheeling garbage cans out, maybe they can get to it. So that's something to look at, and then also the grading for that parking lot is shown to be at 10%, which is too steep. It needs to be less than five for parking, for parking areas.
Okay.
And then, and again, maybe I missed it, are, are there any other plans for buses to access this site?
No.
Okay. Then, that comment goes away.
So, if I recall, to jump on Andy's last comment, I, I do recall people being bused to the site, because they'd be staying in hotels, the, the, I think, I think I remember that.
Yeah.
One of our conversations.
But I don't, I don't believe we're talking buses in a sense of big, major buses, I think we're talking small. Small, like maybe 10, 10-person.
When you walk up the hill, is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about. We're not talking, we're not talking about school bus-sized buses, but smaller, like 10-person type of van.
Happening, when the event is happening, and people coming from all over, like, as we were suggesting that they would. How big is the tent, again?
Forty by twenty.
Forty by twenty, so how many people are we talking about at these events?
Right, well, the, the tent isn't for the event at all, the events would be inside, the tents are there just for, once a year. I mean, they're gonna have services probably every week.
But for that once-a-year event?
Once-a-year event.
I would think that maybe there's gonna be enough people that you would need a 40-by-whatever-size tent. So I don't know how many people that would be, and that's my question for you, is how many people would that be that you're trying to cover under a 40-by-something tent? Because I have a 10-by-12 at home.
Yes.
And we can get six or seven people under there extremely comfortably with.
Right, right.
So, you've got 40-by-whatever, and I'm, I can only assume you're gonna have more than the six people I would have, just saying.
Yes.
So therefore, the buses or transportation into this property is gonna be, if they're coming from hotels or not from here, they're gonna be parking there, they won't be able to block that driveway. They're gonna need parking spaces, which you have already covered up on the top, but if it's coming, people are coming in buses, I'm guessing, maybe 14 people per bus, I don't know, I don't know what we're.
I'll get clarification on that.
So, yeah, that's, the perfect, tell us, we're gonna get clarification. We're telling you, we're suggesting to you the things that we see, that are gonna be a problem, so that you can mitigate those issues.
Sure.
And follow within the zoning code of what we're dealing with here.
Yes.
So, that's where we're at with that, so.
Just so you know, just a edification of the board, the building code will allow 53 and a third people under that 40-by-20 building.
And that's why I'm guessing that there's gonna be maybe a little bit larger than a four-passenger van, or a minivan or something driving in there. I don't know how. And mind you, here I sit not knowing.
Yes, I'll get some clarification from the owners, how many people and how they intend to have them transported to the site. Get some clarification on how many people we expect to put under the tent.
Even if it's twice a year, doesn't matter, that's where we're getting at.
But typically, we would request that, you know, the largest vehicle that you expect to access this site be shown with turning movements to how we're to get in and out.
Andy, do we want fire apparatus as well?
I think, we've mentioned it.
That would be a normal request.
Because, in the backup there, so let's just say the, the longer truck drives up and goes to the left, which is something they would do, to back up to the east of the property, towards the tent, and then make the turn, or try to make the turn back into the driveway, that's gonna be a little tight for emergency apparatus.
So show us that turnaround that you think a fire truck would be able to fit in there. Reach out to the fire department and see what they, what comments, I, I'm sure they've already gotten the information on this project, Dave?
We have.
Have we heard anything from them at all yet, at this point?
Yeah, we, we were gonna try and get you to talk in before we have.
I just, I just wanted to throw it out there and ask a question, so.
The driveway is problematic.
I know.
Is there a problem with the bridge, with the way on that bridge that they cross?
Is there an absolute request for the turnouts? How many turnouts we would need?
Why, why are we doing turnouts? Do we know?
I assume it's because of the length of the driveway.
I thought the one at the top was because there was a rock in the road. That this neighbor put a rock out here.
Yeah, the rocks are, are being removed.
And didn't it have something also to do with if you were having two people coming down the driveway, one to come and one leaving?
Yeah. That's a thing, it's one, yeah, so, yes, but.
I'm just thinking of a place to pull off that somebody can get into that area, go past, and then go the next way, or?
I'm, I'm good with it, I just.
So, based on, based on our measurements, the total length of the driveway appears to be about 500 and, 520 feet to the, to the dumpster enclosure. I'd have to double-check the code requirements for when a, a turnout requirement kicks in, but.
Is there any, any problem with site distance, when you guys went up there, like, if a car's coming up and a car's coming down, they can see each other?
On the driveway, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I wasn't there, but, I mean, I take Dave's word for it.
Anyone, anymore? Paul, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. So, my understanding, Dave, are you still on the track that we're covered for the October event?
Yeah, I am, the tent would be allowed via a building permit, because it's a singular use.
Yep.
Everything else is gonna track the site plan.
Right, and so, you know, what, what I'm hearing is there's a lot of long-lead type items. You know, when you talk about needing to get a transportation corporation, there's a lot that goes into that. You know, you don't necessarily hold, need to hold up a site plan review over a DEC jurisdictional determination, but making sure that the, the water is proper, properly, you know, the water line's properly separated, or that there's a transportation corporation, that's a big deal. So, one of the things coming into this, when you set the public hearing for this month, was, you know, leaving open the possibility that you may not open the public hearing. And I just wanted to mention that, because, you know, obviously, if, if you were to open it tonight, maybe you'll get some public comment, and that'd be fine. But then, you, you probably would want to continue it, you know, pretty much indefinitely, until they get together the information they need in order to come back and have a full application.
Say again? Yes, yes, so. Okay, anything else, Paul?
Nope.
Okay. Bill, you have a question?
My, my question is in terms of timing, so we have one more meeting before your grand opening, it's a September meeting.
Yeah, so, Paul and I have talked about this, it's my decision that we're gonna split off the tent. And, because I can do a temporary tent permit through my office, you know, we'll check for things like porta potties, fire safety, like we do for the bazaar, for example. And then everything else, including the annual tent, and therefore the additional people, will still remain under your, your review.
So you're just going to permit the tent?
I'm gonna permit the tent for October.
For the event?
Like I would for anybody who, you know.
The rest of it's still gonna be underway, they just don't have the authorization to act as if they're having.
Correct, you know, if, if you threw a party for 60 people, you would get a big tent, and if it was on a property that couldn't, we worried about it handling it, we would require a permit. Anything over 50?
But how, how does this impact the change of use to a church use?
It doesn't, so again, i- if, if you have a tent that can handle over 50 people, you are required by law to get a building permit. It's actually called an operating permit, and we inspect the, the tent for fire safety things, if it's, is it smoke spread, fire spread, the whole thing. So, what I, what we decided we, I would do is allow them to do their thing, you know, it's a private, it's a private activity. And it'll act still like a residential use, like you're having friends over, and then, but, the key is, there is going to be a change of use, and therefore it has to remain with you until you figure it out.
So, would they be able to use the home, or not?
They're using the home now.
Oh, I didn't realize that, I.
Yeah, they, they own and occupy the home. This is, this just elevates their, in my opinion, the intensity of the use, even though I don't think the intensity is very high. It does elevate the intensity from a single family to a.
Okay, gotcha.
Different type of use.
All right, well, I guess my next question, this is, board want to, somebody wanna make a motion, open a public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposed? Any abstention, public hearing's open, and I was gonna say, if you would mind taking your seat again, and we can have someone from the public come up and speak to or against your project. If I could have somebody from the public, anybody wanna come up and speak to it, or against it? And I'm gonna ask you to state your name for everybody who doesn't know you. And speak into the microphone too, I appreciate that.
Julian Delicato, on South Chautaqui Lake Road. I'm actually here, and I saw the thing that you need a letter, Kelly will send a letter tomorrow, but I'm here representing Kelly, Kelly Doherty Conti. She wasn't able to come tonight, she's extremely ill at the moment. She is an adjoining person to the property. So, some of the questions that we were talking about is regarding the parking. And if you have a bigger parking area, where's the runoff water from that going to run, is it going to run into her property? I haven't seen this prior, and I don't have a copy of it. But, those were one, some of the questions that we had, were also the number of people that are gonna be at the events. I did some research, and she did some research, looking at a Buddhist cultural center up in Buffalo. And I forget where the other one was, they tend to have events seven days a week. It looked as though it was from 8:00 AM to 4:00, 4:00 PM or 5:00 PM. Not just services, but multiple events. So, you know, what would the noise be, what would the people be going in and out? Somebody brought up parking, you know, if you're gonna have 50 people, are there 50 parking spaces available up there? That's a big concern, I actually pulled out of Kelly's driveway, which is right next to theirs, and like, there's a telephone pole that you can't exactly see all the way down the road on that curve. So, I mean, I'm a little bit concerned about the traffic, there's a lot of traffic on New Paltz Road. That driveway is not that far from turning out of South Chautaqui, as well as the turn that comes around the old Babe's Gas Station, or not Babe's, whatever that gas station is, Zemella's there now. So we, we were, you know, questioning that, with the traffic, parking area, number of people attending, hours of operations. Some of the centers that I did look at, within New York, were 12 to 14 hours a day that they were having people in and out. So, we were worried about that, what events will be hosted at the facility? As you said, you're gonna have a tent for some period of time, I mean, how many people are allowed at the facility at any given point, you know, if there's so much room, do they only have 40 people, what happens if there's 80? Other questions were, I think that's almost it, we're really more concerned about the noise generated and the parking facility, what, what we're a little afraid of is people are gonna park over at the rail trail and take those parking spaces away from our town residents. That's what I have, and I'll get a letter from Kelly to you guys tomorrow, or, or first thing next.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public that would like to speak? Sure, come on up. I want you to know, every husband does that. Paul got up, and he sat down real quick, until he started walking.
My name's Kathy Johnson, and I live in the little house right between the driveways, 88 New Paltz Road. So, my concern, yeah, that's my little house right there. I, I'm concerned for the parking, the driveway, the noise, all the same concerns that the last gentleman had, but I'm just, yeah, how much parking, how much traffic's gonna go in and every day? Every, every day, in and out, in and out, in and out. It's a, it's really far off the road, you can't even see my house from the road, let alone that house. So, I mean, it's far, it's like, are they proposing that to be the parking lot, because that's not what it looks like right now? On the left side of the house?
Yes.
Okay.
That's proposed.
Okay, okay, because there's barely anything on the other side of the house, and it's just, and behind the house is all rock. So, I just. Right there, yeah.
I got it now.
Yeah, that's mine. So like, and behind it, that my, I don't, I don't know if you guys know the history of this property?
You wanna give it to us?
I'm sure, Sal Kuzo, Sal Kuzo, I'm sure you guys know. So, yeah, I got the middle property, so. Yeah, the rocks, Sal put up, they're gonna move the rocks, which is not a big deal, but we're just concerned at the traffic, I have two little dogs, like, it's way off the road, it's very residential, it's really not an ideal spot for any kind of commercial building, quite frankly. And that's really it.
Okay. Thank you. Dave, go ahead.
So, so far, we've heard the same questions that the board has had. You know, Paul suggesting that we continue public hearing, not, not saying to cut anybody off tonight, I, I encourage people to speak. But just so everybody knows, if the board is comfortable with this, my office will renotice for some final, for some distant point in the future where we have more information, so that people don't have to come back every month, while we're going through the review. When we finally have a more substantial and full
We can renote it for the most part.
We would renotice, you know, the neighbors, and, so, I'm just putting that out there, so everybody in the audience knows that this isn't the last opportunity you'll have to speak. Once we have as, as much information as, you know, they can give us, that we request, my office will send letters again, and, and ask you to come back, you know, to have, have all your answer, all your questions tonight, anything you have in the future answered. I just wanted to put it out there.
Okay, is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak? Come on up.
Evening, everyone, Paolo Di Martino, 175 Upper Grand Street. The Kuzo property to the left made a duplex dwelling, and now it wants to become a commercial? A piece of property, are they looking to get off the tax rolls?
It's not before us.
For you?
No.
You can check with the assessor on that tomorrow. Okay. If it does, the town will be losing $14,000 in taxes.
Again, it's not before us, it's not what we do.
And the issue with the septic, it looks like this survey says it only has one field, one tank. The driveway and New Paltz Road, making a turn up, up, Upper Grand, making a right, going towards New Paltz. There's a lot of traffic on that corner. Between the rail trail, Chautaqui, and Upper Grand, I'm sure there'll be some traffic back up there, especially if there's school buses happening during that time. The school buses come down out of the high school, down New Paltz Road, down to the elementary school, to the middle school, back to the high school, that's running there at 2:30, 3 o'clock, all day, every day. That's all I got for tonight.
Thank you.
Excuse me, if you interest, I will introduce and some of the neighbors concerned. Excuse me, if you interest, I will introduce and some of the your neighbors concerned, maybe I can answer some, so ease it up rather than sort of making it pretty big. I'm a board member and I volunteer to put the tent up. My name is Sona, if it's okay. I think maybe they will.
Sir, could you stop talking for a minute? The chairman's trying to respond to you.
Okay.
Well, my first question is, is who are you addressing? What, I couldn't understand what you were talking about, to be quite honest with you. He's a board member where?
A board, a member of the Tibetan Culture Center.
Oh, so you're, hold on, you're looking to reply to some of the questions that we've brought up?
Yeah, I think it may be much.
Hold it, hold it. You can't do that right now.
Oh, I see, because this.
No, no, it's good, we're good.
School bus never be, no need bus, nothing.
Can we mute the sir on the phone?
Okay, I will. Okay.
Yeah, if you'd like to give me a chance to talk, maybe you'll understand how this works. Got it? I can't hear you now, cause you're muted. Okay, we're good with that. So with that being said, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? No, we're gonna keep the public hearing open, open till we get some more of the information. And what I would ask everybody from the public who is interested in this application, please make sure that you're watching, you come to the, the board meetings, because a lot of what we're, what you asked are things that we've already asked and you see we hadn't gotten the full resolution to those questions. So I would, come, keep coming, keep understanding it a little bit more and maybe these questions won't arise so much either. And your concerns will be answered in the, the application, speaking to what they have answers to at that point. Is that fair? Okay? And I, really, I think everybody should come because, you didn't come back up. No, I'm kidding with you. Out of line, a little out of line, Jill, but.
We'll, we'll make a copy for everybody but Jill.
But you can get anything you need from the, the plan director, okay?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it to Jill.
Okay. So I think we can go on to the next item, so, yes?
Yeah, so the board is continuing the public.
We're continuing the public hearing.
The board is officially continuing the public hearing and we will anticipate updates to the plan.
And I would suggest the applicant get all the information that they can get to us over, by the next meeting so that we have a lot to review and we can give you some solid answers or concerns, more concerns, and that you can answer the questions to the public so that they're not so anti this, your application, okay?
Thank you.
Under alt business, we have, what? Under alt business, Highland three fifty-five LLC site plan, three fifty-five Route nine W, public hearing was closed on eight twenty-one, twenty-five. The neg deck was decided eight twenty-one, twenty-five and we're looking to do an approval resolution, but please come forward. You're up.
So last week, we had our negative declaration granted on our application.
I can introduce her, she's Patty Brooks, so in case anybody who doesn't know, I know.
Pardon?
Sorry, none of those moods today, sorry.
That's quite all right. So we're here this evening, again, to review the proposed project of approximately ten thousand square feet of commercial space and one hundred and forty multifamily rental units distributed across four multi-use, mixed-use buildings. As the chairman stated, we did receive our negative declaration at the meeting last week, public hearing was closed and I believe that we have substantially addressed majority of the questions. We do have some cleanup work with DEC, DOT, moving forward, but we're hopeful that the board is willing to entertain a resolution of approval this evening with contingencies.
Okay, anything from staff?
I guess I would, couple of comments, questions, what's the status of the DEC application for the pump station?
I believe that Brandon has been having some conversations with the town about a few questions that we need answered, but we got your email today about the capacity, we needed that before we could submit to the DEC anyway. So we have to go to the DEC now that we have that.
Right. Okay, fair enough. The bond estimate typically, just one, just a caveat, typically my office will prepare that just to save you guys from having to do that. You know, then the rest of it is, is pretty much just cleanup type stuff. No details, any more details?
And nothing that would hold us up from going forward?
No.
Paul, do you have anything?
We have a draft resolution that we prepared, we've run it through CPL and Dave as well, sent it out to the board for comment. So we have that available if the board is disposed to move in that direction.
So, thank you, I'm just gonna ask the board, were there any other questions you guys had for the applicant on this project? Anything at all?
Maybe I missed it, where are we at with the DOT?
So we have received comments from DOT which have been addressed. We did talk last week about, we have asked DOT to, the town board is going to ask DOT if they would consider reducing the speed limit. We did talk about the fact that they did raise it from forty miles an hour to forty-five miles an hour, I believe it was somewhere between ninety-one and ninety-six when they made substantial improvements to the highway. But now that the zoning has changed and we're looking for a walkable community, we are looking to have the speed limit reduced from Milton Avenue to Tilson Avenue. They have approved at this point in time, conceptually, the right turn in and left turn in and out of the property. When we did raise the issue with them about concerns of the neighbors regarding the number of turns in that area, they believed it was consistent with the rest of the traffic along Route nine W and similar areas and that if the town had concerns, then they should open up Roberto Avenue as a full access. We were not interested in doing that, we heard many comments from the neighbors asking us to leave that as emergency access and we got the feedback from both the planning board and the community to leave it emergency access only. Certainly, we left things open that if in the future, either the community or the neighbors felt that it was appropriate to reconsider that, we're more than happy to come back to the board at that point in time, but at this point, we're leaving it as emergency only.
So, and if, oh, you're getting a question, I'm sorry.
So the speed limit, we're looking to revert back to the forty or something lower?
I think that will be up to the, it's forty-five now and I was gonna say, I, I think that would be up to the town board and DOT to determine. The town board can ask for whatever they want to and then the DOT has their own methodology.
It's a non-applicant issue, in order, and I say that because it's a town board thing, they have to make the request.
So the DOT, do you have any suggestions or?
Yeah, once they, once they get a request from the town board, then they can have their conversation on how that's gonna be done.
Right, we, we asked DOT if they would consider it and they said back to us, the town board would need to request it.
Anybody else? Hi, do I have one question for clarity? So when you guys first applied for this apartment, just for clarity, how many apartments did you apply for? Or say that you were gonna have?
One, one six.
So it, it started out at one twenty-six and now it's one forty?
Yeah, so it was the four buildings and then the townhomes in the rear.
So it was, there you go.
Eight townhomes.
And how many townhomes were there?
Ten.
There was ten.
But there you go.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand, cause I, I heard that somebody had said that it had grown and I wasn't sure it really had grown.
Yeah, like sometimes.
Okay. With reason though, because it was townhomes in the back and then they decided to make the apartment in order to keep the.
I got it, that's, but there's a reason for that.
It didn't just, it didn't just evolve, it, it was just being really relocated and able to. Okay. Anything else? Paul, we're good? Dave?
I mentioned last time that there was a revamp to the landscaping plan, they did move the grill area away from Roberto, they did indicate very nicely, I think, where the, with the large trees that were to remain on their property were located. I think the landscape architect did a great job kind of filling in behind the grill area with the, you know, the, the green giants and there's a couple larger trees, red maple sort of scattered around that area. It's really, you know, if you can imagine, it's a nice, nice setup. And other than that, it's really nothing.
Lighting, lighting in the back, I know this is kind of something, it's just maybe an electrician, but lighting in the back over the parking lot, making sure that it's, it's shaded from the neighbors across into Roberto so we don't have them, somebody complaining about lighting.
Someone asked me about that the other day and if you look at their photometric, nothing leaves the site any, at any point.
I just.
You know, not even a tenth of, of.
Perfect, I just wanted to make sure that was done.
They did a nice job with it, I mean, that's why I asked the question about the bells over the lights, everything, every light on this property is downlight.
Okay, perfect. Anybody else on the board? No? Paul, would you like to start the?
I just wanted, we caught, yeah, no, I'm sorry, we just caught a, two typos in the appendix A. Under the general description of the development, it says the proposed project will comprise approximately five thousand square feet of commercial space, that should be ten thousand.
Yep. Okay.
And then item three, under the bedroom count, for the affordable units, it's going to be eight one-bedroom, not seven. And one three-bedroom, not two.
Okay, so that's, that's a, that's a change to the affordable housing plan submitted by the applicant, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So we, so we can, we can fix that.
And then the other thing, I think, Dan, under the Speedy's General Permit for Stormwater Discharges, that should be GP dash zero dash twenty-five dash zero zero one.
Zero zero one, gotcha.
Instead of zero zero two.
Yep, I got zero zero two, sorry about that.
And I, I think that was it with the typos that we.
Thank you for looking at it, appreciate that.
Hold on, Paul, hold on one second. Ask Paul a question, can I?
How are the affordable units monitored and, and these are forever affordable, so who makes sure they're in compliance? Is there an annual review?
Ah, Dave, this is your question.
That's a question for me, yes. So the town board has a new, has a new procedure for how this, this will be enforced going forward. I've actually been working just this week with the supervisor on revising that language. We had already had a draft of the Affordable Housing Code. Houses don't work in the, in the old methodology, so the newer incarnation, it's only apartments. However, what'll happen is before January one, excuse me, June one of every year, the applicant will report back to the town board with a, really a set of forms that my office has already generated, confirming that the, that the apartments are rented, the size of bedroom, and that they are rented for the, what the town board has determined the rental is allowed to be for, for size of bedroom. And that's based on the Kingston Metropolitan Statistical Area Number for Immediate Income, which in Ulster County is a hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars, it's a family of four. It's prorated down and up, depending on how many people are in the, are in the apartment. However, to answer your question directly, the onus is completely on, on the property manager, owner of the property. They're going to get a form in the beginning saying they're gonna certify rental at X number of dollars and then once a year, they will, again, certify to the town that they are remaining in that affordable range unless the town board changes the amount, which can happen annually. And then we would have a new form will go out saying you're allowed to charge this number.
And if someone goes over income in some of these units, do they have a right to substitute a different unit? Would they have to evict somebody if they go over income?
Here, here, I got a quick question that maybe you'll help with that. So when we're saying ten percent, are we gonna say we have?
Fourteen, fourteen units.
There's fourteen units, but here's what I'm getting at. You have eighty-eight one, oh, the way you have it here, so you're doing eight, ten percent of each of the items that are there. Now that's where I was going.
But those are, those are gonna be identified by unit number, as you rent them or just any?
No, because all of the units are constructed to the same standard. Sometimes when people have affordable units, they don't necessarily construct them to the same standard as the other units. One key constructs all of them the same, so they are all gonna be top-end units. So they don't, it makes it easier for them because then it's easier to move people into any one of the apartments because there are not specified apartments that are for low-income only.
However, Bill, there is a piece of the code that would allow a landlord, so the leases run two years initially and then depending on if the renter sort of achieves out of that income range, you know, if they have more money, they get a one-year extension on their lease until they find some other place else to live. After that, there is a mechanism in the code that would, you know, get the, get the landlord to, to move them on.
And when you're saying the code, this is a projected code?
No, this is what the code right now. The only piece that isn't in our code right now is the, is the process piece for.
That's what I was getting at, yeah.
But that, but that is being worked on as we speak.
That's good.
Yeah, but, but the process piece was the key, the key, the key that we missed all these years was, was how to get the reporting to happen. I think we've got a good handle on that now, I think it'll work out well, so we're gonna, we're gonna bring it and see.
And just throwing this out there, but what if they don't meet that affordable housing?
Yeah, so that's, that's a really good question. It actually, if they, if they don't, if they rent, they don't comply with the code, it actually turns into two violations of the zoning code. For each violation of the zoning code, it's five hundred dollars for the first week, so that's a thousand dollars, and then it's a thousand dollars per violation per week thereafter. So if it's, you know, first week is a thousand, the second week will be two thousand, so now with the three thousand in fines, and again, this will determine what, what a judge can do, but this is a super easy thing to bring to court because they will, they will have, already given us a certification saying they're going to rent at X number of dollars, this unit to this family, based on this eligibility right out of our code, and then the judge will look at it and go, oh, you didn't do that, so.
I can only suggest do more than the ten percent that's required, that way if you can't meet your minimum of ten, okay, you're good. Just saying.
So once they're designated as affordable, they stay affordable forever?
Well, no, the number of units will, must remain affordable forever. However, the way these guys work, it could be any unit, I mean, if, if they have, you know, one family moves out and then another non-affordable family moves in, they would have to replace that affordable unit somewhere else in the building.
And just because of me, I mean, is that affordable housing only to new developers?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, from, really from this moment on, and one key happens to be the guinea pig, but Brandon's got big shoulders, so, yeah, yeah. So anyway, but, but they're experiencing this, they just know locations.
If that, if that is sold, that continues.
It continues forever, yep.
May I make a comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I, I think, you know, I'm dealing with affordable housing in other communities as well, and I think, you know, what I'm seeing is that the zoning law may require the planning board to have a role in just sort of setting what it is as part of your approval. But really, when it comes down to it, a lot of this is all town board and the building department in terms of administration, you know, so there is a separation there and it's good that you guys are informed, but I think it's also, you know, nice that the planning board's rule, when you approve a project, it ends. You have to approve, approve a workforce housing plan, that's what we have, and then it's up to the town to enforce it.
Perfect, great, thank you. Okay, so now you can go on with your reading of the resolution.
Okay, very good. Now therefore, this, again, this is mixed-use housing, we've been through Seeker, we've been to the county, gotten our comments back, made a negative declaration, be it resolved that based on the application, the planning board hereby conditionally approves the project and the following site plans, and there's, you know, a whole list of site plans, there's a SWIP, a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, and then also the landscaping plans that Dave referenced, which have been updated as of August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, so you guys saw those last week. And be it further resolved that the chair shall be authorized to sign the site plans upon receipt of the following items, confirmation of any final comments from the town engineer, approval by the town attorney and town engineer, the easement required for the town main water line on the project site, approval by the town attorney and the town engineer. Approval by the town attorney and the town engineer, the performance guarantee required for the water line on the project site. Proof of conceptual approval from DOT for the project site access drive, and for any utility installation, and proof of coverage of the project under the New York State D E C general permit for stormwater discharges, as amended by Patty, thank you. Proof of approval from the New York State D E C for the proposed sanitary sewer pump station, and confirmation of payment to the town of any and all recreation, escrow, or other fees. And be it further resolved that prior to the issuance of any building permit for the applicant, any building permit for the project, the applicant shall provide proof of recording and the easement for the water line, copies of any and all approvals as may be required from other agencies for the project. And be it resolved that if any other, any other reviewing agencies for the project require any material or significant changes to the site plans, they need to come back to the planning board in the discretion of the chairman. Be it further resolved that prior to the issuance of a building permit, pre-construction meeting shall be held between the code officer and the construction contractor. Be it further resolved that prior to the town's issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the holder of the building permit shall provide the town with as-built record drawings upon the completion and testing of the utilities. Be it further resolved that as an ongoing condition, the applicant shall comply with the Affordable Housing Plan incorporated herein as appendix A, as amended based on what Patty told us, and any other applicable requirements of the zoning code 100 dash 36. And be it further resolved that is required by the town law, copy of this resolution shall be filed with a clerk within five days, and shall also be sent to the applicant. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed?
No.
Okay, any extensions? Okay. Well, thank you very much. I will ask you just one more question, if you don't mind. How long is the construction going to take on the property?
Eighteen to twenty-four months.
Start, really?
How quickly we can get the rest of the, the final permitting from D E C and as, as soon as possible.
There you go, okay.
Now during construction, no traffic, everything enters and exits on nine W, nothing goes out the back on Roberto. Great.
And I'll say on, on behalf of the, the people in town and the local neighbors, that you, you were very attentive to their needs and their concerns. You, you acted on them quick, you did, made the changes, and it was very accepting of those who were opposed to it in the beginning. I, I thank you for them. I'm sure that they're happy and satisfied with what's there. Well, you're not going to make everybody happy, but, but I, I think that that was a really good way. You guys first came to us, showed us what you wanted to do before the application was there, and you let the public speak to you to mitigate any of the issues that were really of great concern in the beginning. So I appreciate that. Really, made our process a little easier also. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, next on the agenda. We have a short-term rental. We have Sandro, Sandra Santora from sixty-two Mackey Road. This is public hearings open eight twenty-one, twenty twenty-five. And if you don't mind, I, I mean, we have your application, we spoke to it the last time you were here. And we want to make sure that nothing has changed. If I could just have a quick answer on that, because the drawing was brutal. I don't want to go through the drawing anymore. How'd you make out? Is there any changes or anything that you have to state?
Hi, my name is Lloyd Gray, and I'm the property manager for the property at sixty-two Mackey and working with Sandra Santoro. Nothing has changed, no complaints or anything like that. We did put up a bigger sign, signage in, in the front, so that it's, you know, more specified for the guests that are pulling in to the property.
Okay.
But other than that, everything's the same.
You answered our concerns, and that was, thanks, I appreciate that too.
You're welcome.
So I'm just going to go right into, is there anyone from the public, since the public hearing is still open, is there anyone from the public who wants to speak on behalf or against the project? Any hands raised in Zoom land? None? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, Paul, you want to do?
We're back.
Yes.
So this is a short-term rental. It's a type-two action under Securus, and no environmental review is required. Close the public hearing, and I can read the now-therefore clauses. Be it resolved that pursuant to the STR resolute regulations in New York State town law. Excuse me for a second. I gotta take care of my dog. Oh, come in. All right. So Charlie's helping me here. New York State town law, the chairman is author, authorized to conditionally sign the special use permit, approving the use of the property as an STR with a maximum occupancy of six guests per stay upon proof satisfactory to the chairman that the applicant has provided adequate, adequate and sufficiently visible signage marking the address of the property from Mackey Road, and payment of all fees, including but not limited to recreation and escrow fees owed to the town of Lloyd. Be it further resolved that after an assignment of the planning board chairman, the special use permit shall remain in effect for two years, and may be renewed pursuant to zoning code 100 dash forty-two by issuance of an STR permit by the code enforcement officer. And be it further resolved that if any part of this resolution is annulled, the remaining portion shall stay in effect. Be it further resolved that within five days to the effective date of this resolution, a copy shall be filed with the town clerk, and also sent to the applicant. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Question, because I didn't see it. Do we have an Ulster County registration? Did he do that? I, I don't remember seeing it, sorry. Okay, just wanted to make sure. So can I have a motion to accept the resolution as read? Motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? None? Well, enjoy your STR. Thank you for registering in.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much, everyone on the board. Thank you.
Take care.
Take care.
Next on the agenda. Oh, it's actually administrative business. It's the village's site plan extension request. Who we have? John come up and. Oh, John just, so I'm glad that you didn't send in a sacrificial lamb today. So now you get to hear me.
I'm here.
But you can go and explain what you're looking for, and then it'll be my turn.
Sure, my name is John First. I'm an attorney at Catania Mann and Ryder in Newburgh, New York. The local land use attorney for the applicant in connection with the P R R D project that you guys had approved. Actually, a couple of years ago, and then there was amended, an amended approval last August of 2024. And according to your code, the site plan approvals expire after one year. However, the code does allow for extensions of those approvals, as long as there's been good cause shown, and as long as the applicant can show they've been making progress. So we have actually made a lot of progress. Out of all the conditions, I was just going through them. We're pretty much finished with ninety percent of them. One outstanding condition is the payment of the recreation fees. But obviously, the big condition, the, the thousand-pound gorilla out there is the traffic light. As part of the amended approval last year, the traffic light was supposed to be installed at an oper, operational within a year. So we have it constructed and installed, as I'm sure most of you've known. You see driving by, I think it's been up actually for a month or so. Just to give you a little update on the process and where we are with the traffic light. We are waiting on Central Hudson to install a transfer switch, and once that transfer switch is installed, then the light will have power. And once the light has power, our contractor can go back out there. He said he's got another two to four weeks of work, and then after that, he will be done. Then he needs to coordinate with the New York State Department of Transportation as far as getting that light online. It's my understanding there's a whole process involved where it kind of blinks for a week or so, and then, you know. So I'm sure most of you probably know better than I. Andy, I'm sure knows. So we're probably looking at another, you know, six weeks or so. Fingers crossed. But, you know, at this point, we're kind of waiting on Central Hudson.
Okay, are you done? I just don't know if you got anything else?
I, I am done, so bring it on.
Yeah, bring it on. Listen, the poor guy that was here last week, I saw him at the Dutchess County Fair, he remembered, I remembered him, and I'm looking, I'm saying, I know you're from somewhere, and he said, "Last night," and I said, "Oh, so you took the beat, and you're the guy," so. And I felt bad for him there, but I don't feel bad tonight. I would clear that, okay?
Yes, please.
You bought his lunch.
Huh? No, I didn't. So here's what we got. So you knew that you had to get this thing installed and operational within a year.
Correct.
Yet there were, what were the reasons for that year-long wait? What were the reasons? I mean, because I, well, I'll make, I'll clear it up. It was something that you said that you were looking for, financing and all that other stuff that needed to be done. And I think I said, "Well, if you get the financing done in the spring, get the financing done." So this way, this thing is done during the time it could be done soon, as the DOT or whoever it was was going to allow you to open and do that type of work. Remember I said that? I don't know if you remember. It's a year ago.
I'm sure you did. I'm not.
Oh, I remember it. I remember it because the light wasn't, you know, we wanted the light. We really wanted the light.
I understand.
So now, since that happened, and, okay, so you guys are moving in the right direction, and we appreciate it. But knowing that you had that year, what was your delay? What was your delay in getting it? It's only, it's been a month now, so we'll say it was done in January or July, okay? So July it was up, and we waited a month. Now, explain to me what was your delay, so I have a better clear understanding.
Since July?
No, from whenever it was, a year ago, till you getting to July.
I think it was just a matter of coordinating, coordinating with the contractor, so there's a general contractor, and then there's a specific contractor that installs the light, figuring out the schedules, and then I think there's only certain periods where you can work within the DOT right-of-way. You know, certain winter months, and again, maybe Andy can kind of clarify if I'm wrong, but, so I think there was a lot, and, and financing. I mean, you know, it's an expensive endeavor to install a traffic light. I, I, it's, it's very expensive, so.
We saw new houses going up on the top of the hill.
That's the model home. That was one model home that was built.
Gifted?
Hmm?
Gifted or purchased?
It was purchased.
Okay, so again, I'm just trying to roll this around. I do project managing all day long. Okay, that's what I do. So now I'm looking at, I'm saying, well, you know it was going to take, we'll say, six weeks or so many weeks to get this thing operational after the install.
Correct.
So why wasn't it done in a timeframe that you could have gotten that done, so that before you needed to have that one year expire and ask for this extension, why wasn't it done in that time?
Right. Hindsight's 2020.
Well, for us it isn't. We just knew it had to be done by August twenty-third, was it, Dave?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Correct.
We were just waiting, watching the clock go, and nothing being done.
Correct.
Let me understand, because I'll tell you why. We got a lot of people out in the public who are looking at a big disaster up there. And a disaster, I mean that it hasn't been mowed, there's been no light in there, hearing that the, the meeting that we're having and saying that it was going to be done within a year, and you understood our concern and made us feel comfortable with saying, okay, a year is August, we'll go with that date. But you didn't make us feel very comfortable after the date got closer and closer together, and yet your guy comes in here, and he's here only a week before, asking for an extension, not a couple of weeks before. And if I can say, is that a process issue, Dave? Is there any reason why they couldn't have come in here a little earlier, asking for that extension, maybe giving us a little heads up before your time was going to expire? I gotta just ask, okay? Because we got to answer to the public, okay? So we can't fight your battle.
Understood.
So we look at the law and the agreement we made with you, and you did not hold to that agreement.
Correct, but it's not like we didn't nothing. I mean, the light is installed and constructed. Quite honestly, if nothing was built, if I may finish, then I can certainly understand your anger and rage.
It's not really your anger, I just want you to know. I'm passionate about this, okay?
And I understand there's a lot of pressure on the town officials, and, and my client understands that. But something has been done, a substantial amount of work has been done. So yes, it hasn't met the deadline, but I think we're only six weeks, maybe two months behind that deadline, which in the grand scheme of things, you're a project manager, things get delayed. I, I think, you know, especially when you're dealing with Central Hudson, New York State DOT, and other outside agencies and entities, that, you know, you have no control.
Paul, I understand, but I just want to hear your explanation to the public or whoever's listening to it, and each one of these board members who might get picked up in the middle of a restaurant, or maybe in Grand Union or whatever it is over there now. Whatever, yeah, I know the grocery store. I am, I'm old, I'm old. But the point of the matter is, is, that's right. The point of the matter is, is that we need to be able to explain the position that we have taken a year ago to see nothing there after a year. Do you hear it be called, what is it, Fort Highland? I think I've heard. Like, Mark, you could probably answer to that. And then the other part is, is we're looking at something that's got trees all growing up there, and I read your letter asking what it was. You were going to talk to Dave and see what it was we wanted maintained. Well, I'll tell you what we want maintained. We don't want it to look like an overgrown development that somebody just abandoned, and it looks like that.
Right, well, if you can provide some guidance as far as what you want done to clean it up.
Let's do this. Let's do this. How would you have your yard look? Well, maybe Mr. Sanderson would tell us that. How would he have his yard look?
It's not a yard. It's, it's a construction site.
I'm being, okay, but you know what? You got a beautiful wall there that you spent millions of dollars.
Yes, yes.
Let's clean it up, make it look nice.
Right.
That's my request. Tell Mr. Sanderson we said thank you.
He's invested a lot of money to date in the walls and the lights.
That's what investors do.
And sewer upgrades. You know, there's been a lot of benefits to the town.
And again, we're going to wait another year for something else, or can we take your word for it that this thing's going to progress the way you say it's going to happen? Or are we going to be at the, the, the goal line and maybe not getting past it and just saying, okay, where are we at now?
As far as the light, I understand, I spoke to the contractor directly, and he's, he told me the timeframe, what needs to be done. I, I have no doubt that it'll get done in the next couple of months.
Well, after that, I guess I don't know what else I can say. Is any other board member got anything concerns?
I, I have a question, but, and excuse me, because I'm new to the board. But if there was financial issues prior, what's, are they all straightened out to, to a point where we don't have to be concerned with you finishing the rest of the project, and by you, I mean your, your client?
Um, I'm not really sure what your question is as far as the finance. I mean, you know, he's looking for, you know, he, he's trying to refinance it, yes.
So, well, I guess, I, my point is, if he was having financials now, it's very early stages of the project, correct? Do you have confidence in him being able to finance the balance of the project, or are we going to be looking at it ahead?
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's early, because like, he, he has invested a lot of time and energy in the project.
Well, how many homes are built up there?
There's the model home is up, but with the retaining, with the retaining walls, as the chairman had pointed out, were very expensive.
I understand, but I mean.
As well as the traffic light and the sewer and the water, so he has invested a lot of time and money to date.
I, I'm not doubting.
And just like with any development, you know, you try not to use your own money in the investment, so.
Okay. You don't feel confident that he'll be able to finish the project?
Yeah, I mean, he ordered the model home. He's, he's finishing the light. He couldn't get any COs. He couldn't sell any of the site, the pad sites, until the light is up, and he still has to do the, the pump station as well.
Right, well, that, getting back to that, how you just said just a couple minutes ago or seconds ago that he's done substantial benefits to the town, what are they as of right now?
Sure, I think there, one of the sewer lines was upgraded.
But that was a condition of the job, right? You couldn't build the job.
Some, yes, some of it was, kind of went beyond what his, was impacting. So there's a whole, actually, there's a whole developers' agreement that the town board negotiated, and it kind of outlines a lot of the benefits that we are responsible for, some of which we've already completed, some of which we are on the process of completing, some of which we still have to do.
Hey, anyone else?
Yeah, John, the next ten days or so, can we get the front of the property at least cleaned up, all the way up to the top wall? At least make it look decent? So from nine W, up the hill.
Question. Anyone else?
Last time I spoke passionately about this, I think it's still hanging in the rafters from last. I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. So we have the, the request for the extension. I can ask for a vote on that, can't I? That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, we have, we have a draft resolution for you. It's pretty much pro forma. It's something the board ordinarily would regularly agree to. And I can read the now-therefore clauses. And I can read the now-therefore clauses if you'd like.
I would like.
Okay, now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to the zoning code, the planning board hereby extends for one year from the effective date of this resolution, the amended conditional site plan approval. Be it further resolved that the applicant shall comply with the terms and conditions of the amended conditional site plan approval, which remain in full force and effect. Be it further resolved that if any part of this resolution is annulled, the remainder shall stay in effect. Be it further resolved that within five days of the effective date of this resolution, a copy shall be filed with the town clerk and also provided to the applicant. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Motion, second. Anybody?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, this motion is resolved.
Thank you.
So, John, thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you.
One really positive thing for the public to know is the applicant has indicated that New York State DOH has approved construction of the assisted living facility. So that's a big, big step forward for you guys. And the planning board should take credit for that.
Well, thank you. Thanks again. Oh, you guys, thank you.
Ready to go for somebody.
Yes.
How many more extensions?
One more.
They can come and get one more extension. We have one more item on the agenda.
Okay, next on the agenda is local law D of 2025. Dave, would you like to speak to that a little bit?
I will, I'd be happy to. Thank you. This is, for those of you who attended the tri-board meeting, you've heard this already. This is the local law where, in effect, the town board is going to act to ban crematoria in the town of Lloyd. The way this will happen is that there'll be two definitions inserted into the definitions portion of the zoning code, and no use will be added to the use table. Therefore, this will be a defined use in the town with no location, right? So it won't be allowed anywhere. As you know, the hiccup in the past was, is it service? Is it industrial? Because it wasn't defined, it created this gray area, which caused all this other angst. This is going to remedy that by defining it and then not allowing it anywhere.
Okay.
And this is a referral to you from the town board. They'll act in September, I believe. So if you have any comments or corrections you'd like to see in this, you can either say it now or let me know before the 18th of September, something like that.
By the workshop meeting, we can get it to you, or before their first meeting?
Before, no, before their second meeting. Yeah, I think it's the 18th.
A little bit, if you have a question or you want to change something, you think something needs to come up.
17, thank you. 17. 17, 17.
You hurt me, man. I was racing back, and I kept calling Johnny. Johnny, I don't think I'm going to be able to make it.
But, but the bottom line is that if this is the community's inclination to ban crematoria in the community, this is the way to do it.
Okay. Seems the public got what they're looking for after this is resolved. Good, well. Benefiting those who are against it, for sure. Okay, so with that being said, again, wait a second. Everybody read the thing, the document, go over it a little bit. If you have any changes, please get them back to Dave in a timely manner, so he has them, he can give them back to the town board. Okay? All right, motion to adjourn.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Bye, guys.
Good night, good night.
Take care. Andy, good to see you. Oh, hey.
He can't hear you. He's definitely supposed.
And Bill, I like you around the corner, because then I can see you actually, which is nice.
So he usually can't see you because you're hidden, so now he can see you.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Bye, guys.
All right, good night, buddy.
Have a good one.